Then we started looking at it was cheaper to do it this way.
Yeah.
Put two more doors up there. Looks fine with one. He just put that one in so they could get material up there without wiring through the house.
You don't have three of them.
I've had a lot of people ask me.
Well, how is the baked milk?
Because it's too small.
Who is this?
I told you.
No, it's not. It definitely would look a little funny. I mean, if we had done one, it'd have to be a lot bigger.
Well, that's just where.
No, that's exactly.
This family is there.
Well.
It looked like this before.
And that's her. That's my ex-husband. That's down. I'll give it to you for a little bit.
Yes, ma'am.
Will you send it to me? Those shoes. Her shoes.
The short maybe.
Mm-hmm. Give me your paper ready.
It's just as cruel as his agenda. Not sorry that by the way, you go jump straight to it.
This is a hot name. So big sending it to me.
It's been there since your trip plane. Might as well set up sewage. Thirty thousand won a ton. Might as well take seven.
You gonna send it to me tonight?
Yeah, I mean, I said that for email. I'll go get them. My dad, my dad wants a baby. My dad was retired. I said you could fit two pieces of furniture in there.
Call me north. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this day and we thank you for this opportunity to come together for you and citizens of Monroe to make the best decisions possible for this city. Lord, we just pray that you bless this meeting and bless this decision, bless the decisions that are made here tonight. Amen. Let the record reflect all council members present. We need approval of the agenda adding one item under new business. Discussion of staff, staff update on workshops from the community, the utility concerns. We just, Matthew and the staff's been working and we just want to update to see how that's going. We need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
A motion.
A motion by Ms. Malcolm. Seconded by Mr. Adcock. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. We need approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Dixon. Seconded by Mr. Little. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. We have two people signed up for public comments. When I call your name, you'll walk to the podium and speak your name and address. You have three minutes. First one, Steve Long.
I'm just gonna read a prepared statement if I could. Some of you have already seen, but first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your dedicated time and effort you put forth on council. Your efforts are appreciated by those who are representative of us for the common good of all. I speak here on the efforts by of the rezoned property adjacent to Olympian Way. We're not in favor of any action that is not in the best land use for this property. Land use should be in the best interests of the city, area residents, and other business entities operating nearby. The mixing of apartments and single-family neighborhoods has proven to be a negative impact on the city of Monroe. If such an action does not result in the increase of overall property value and wealth of all citizens impacted in the area, then the action is ill-advised. Our great respect for land on to capitalize on the sale of his assets. I do, however, have concerns when the plans have negative impact on the daily lives and assets of others. Most of us on Olympian Way, they've stayed there because of the wonderful peace and solitude the dead industry affords. The mature standard hardwoods in the rear of these houses is one of the few left standing in Monroe. We don't want to see this change. If it has to change, then the resulting land use should not add to the unbelievable inventory of apartments and of rental property in Monroe, Georgia. If this property has to be developed, then the sell-in buyer should deed 150 feet of hardwood buffer to the adjacent property owners on Olympian Way. The Department of Natural Resources should search this property for endangered species of wildlife that have been seen on this property in the past. The impact of a second entrance on Olympian Way will have a great impact on our life as we know it. Homeowners here should be compensated for their environmental changes that would take place. Our infrastructure is already poor, to say the least. Improvements in utilities, streets, curbs, and associated engineering issues would need to be addressed. We all know the beginning intentions of building developers are always good. But what happens down the road? When recession comes, properties are sold and promises can't be honored. Request that you vote no and support it consideration. One of the other major considerations is just how many units per acre. Trying to get out of this and when you really think about the number of people and over a hundred and something cars all dumping in that area, it's just, you know, it could be a potential problem. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is Andy Mountain.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Good to see all you guys. I was here to speak also in opposition to apartments on Olympia Drive. I just simply feel we have enough apartments for our people. We did a little work and just looked at the percentage of apartments or rental property in Monroe compared to surrounded cities. And I'll just read you off some of these. Loganville thirty percent, Madison thirty-four, Wyandotte forty-one, Snellville thirteen, Watkinsville twenty-seven, and Monroe sixty. So, you know, we're way out of balance here, guys, so we need to really look at this and Walton County is only twenty-five percent. You know, I can remember when Plaza Drive on the future land use map was earmarked for small business. And you had a couple. You had Gary Rowe, you had Harry Arnold built the office building there. And you look today and you see all the apartments out there. So I just think it's not good. It's not for what we need and people like Steve has had homes there for twenty-five, thirty years and you're gonna put these apartments within seventy-five feet of their homes. I mean, to me, it's just a no-brainer, but we would just ask you to deny this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item two, moving to the rezon. Two twenty-one Baker Street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is petition number fourteen dash zero 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 two-three. Monroe Walton Properties LLC. Res zoning property two twenty-one Baker Street to PRD from P one to R one. Total acreage of the property is eight and a half acres plus or minus. Purposes for multi-family rental homes. Properties present rezoning B one, R one, as indicated, your request in PRD. They will commit to use that suitable and use enveloping of adjacent and nearby properties. Change is only will not adversely affect the existing adjacent properties and the subject property does have restricted economic uses for rezoning. Change is only will not cause excessive overuse of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. Future land use plan indicates a property should be mixed-use, low-density residential, commercial retail, and office slash professional. Staff recommendation was to approve with the recommended conditions, but since we got no recommended conditions in the planning and zoning meeting, we have your recommendation.
Okay. It's property owner here. You'll have ten minutes to thought of the council and then we'll go for the other side. If anybody objects, I mean, you'll have a chance to come back to the council.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Din Webb. Twelve thirty Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three oh nine. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. For the record, I've just handed the clerk a set of legal and constitutional objections. I'm happy to say as much or as little as you'd like to hear about this application, but as Patrick just identified, there is an issue as to what happened to the planning commission, so I'm going to make a request tonight for a deferral back to the planning commission meeting on Tuesday. I understand that there are several in the council who raised an issue regarding the fact that no vote was taken, and I think that is a wise conclusion for several reasons, including the one that Patrick mentioned, which is the recommendation from staff is approval subject to the planning commission conditions, which we don't yet have. I also think some additional time might allow us to speak to Mr. Long, Mr. Mountain, and see if there's something we can do with their concerns as well. So I'm happy to stop there. Say my words for the next time we come here if there's interest in entertaining our request for deferral upfront. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of this? Anyone in the audience like to speak against this? Okay, hearing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Here are the wishes of the property owner to have a motion to take it back to the planning and zoning committee except to need a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion got. Send it back to planning and zoning. Second. You have a second. Mr. Adcock, any discussion?
Mayor, pardon me to interject. And I think we need a little more specificity on the motion about taking it back to planning commission request. Asked that it go to planning and zoning next week. There has been proper advertisement. However, if you're going to send it back down to planning and zoning, our zoning ordinance calls for, of course, public hearing and public hearing being advertised and noticed fifteen and forty-five, not less than fifteen, not more than forty-five days out. To re-advertise for next Tuesday, we can't hit that mark. So our office's recommendation would be if you're going to send it back to planning commission, which you have the authority and the right to do, that we would re-advertise for the next available planning commission meeting, which according to Mr. Kelly, I think would push us to the May twenty, something like that, planning commission. And then, depending upon the outcome of that meeting, the recommendations are not. Then mayor and council consider it at their June meeting, either first or second meeting. So it'd be our recommendation that if you do pass this motion and the motion be amended with specificity, you send it back down, be re-advertized, and come up for the next available appropriately advertised planning commission meeting.
I'll make that motion with those stipulations.
Okay. Second still stands on, Mr. Adcock. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Send it back to planning and zoning in May after it's advertised. Okay, new business. We have appointment with the Historic Preservation Commission. Like a motion for David Dickinson to re-serve. Second. Seconded by Mr. Bradley.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Adcock. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Item number two is resolution of the MGAG voting delegate.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution being resolved by the mayor and the city council of City of Monroe that Matthew Chance is hereby appointed to serve as the city's voting delegate on the municipal gas authority of Georgia's election committee with authority to cast all votes to which the city is entitled. Greg Thompson is appointed as alternate voting delegate. So resolve this eighth day of April two thousand and fourteen. That is the resolution, Mayor.
Okay, we need a motion for this resolution.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Little. Seconded by Ms. Malcolm. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Item number three is resolution for the MGAG supplemental contract portfolio four project.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution of the City of Monroe approving the supplemental contract for the gas portfolio four project between the City of Monroe and the Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia and authorizing the execution, delivery, and performance of the supplemental contract for the gas portfolio four project and for other purposes. Whereas the nineteen eighty-seventh session of the General Assembly of the State of Georgia adopted the Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia Act as amended, creating the Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia, providing for its organization and purposes and authorizing it to contract with certain municipalities and other political subdivisions for the provision of an adequate and dependable wholesale supply of gas to meet the needs of the gas distribution systems of such political subdivisions. And whereas the member has heretofore entered into a certain gas supply contract, is heretofore extended for an additional ten years beyond the original termination date of December twenty fifteen to December thirty-one twenty twenty-five pursuant to the first amendment to the gas supply contract and from December thirty-one twenty twenty-five to December thirty-one twenty forty pursuant to the second amendment to gas supply contract, with the gas authority providing for the gas authority's obligation to furnish the member with its gas supply requirements and for the member's obligation to pay for such gas supplies. And whereas the member has also studied and reviewed its opportunity to contract with the gas authority for additional gas supplies, and to that end, the member and the gas authority have called to be prepared a certain supplemental contract, this the gas portfolio four project dated as of November one twenty fourteen. Now therefore being resolved by the governing body of the member, the City of Monroe, in meeting, in this meeting duly assembled, and is hereby resolved by the authority thereof as follows. Section one, the member hereby finds and determines that it is in its best interest to contract with the gas authority pursuant to OCGA forty-six four ninety-nine and the terms of the gas supply contract and the supplemental contracts, and the member hereby declares in accordance with the act its intention to so contract with the gas authority for the purchase of its gas supply. Section two, the member hereby approves and authorizes the execution and delivery of the supplemental contract in substantially the form of the drafts of the supplemental contract attached to this resolution as exhibit A and hereby incorporated herein by reference, subject to such changes, additions, and deletions made in the mayor's discretion with the advice of council. Supplemental contracts shall be executed by the mayor attested by the clerk and shall have the member's seal affixed thereto and shall be delivered to the gas authority, and when so executed and delivered, shall be binding upon the member in accordance with its terms. Execution of supplemental contract as authorized herein shall be conclusive evidence of the member's approval thereof. Section three, in adoption of this resolution, the member hereby recognizes that this action will be relied upon by other municipalities that own and operate gas distribution systems and that adopt similar resolutions and furtherings of the organization of the gas authority under the act and that the member is also reliant upon the adoption of such resolutions by such other municipalities. Section four, all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. So resolve this eighth day of April two thousand and fourteen. That is the resolution, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we need a motion on this resolution?
Need to adopt the resolution.
Second. Seconded by Ms. Scott. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Item number four is a resolution for the agreement of the Jifa Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the City of Monroe is determined to borrow an amount not to exceed two million dollars from the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund administered by the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority to finance a portion of the cost of acquiring, constructing, and installing the environmental facilities described in exhibit A to the here and after defined loan agreement pursuant to the terms of a loan agreement between the borrower and the lender, the form of which has been presented at this meeting, and whereas the borrower's obligation to repay the loan made pursuant to the loan agreement will be evidenced by a promissory note of the borrower, the form of which has been presented to this meeting, now therefore being resolved by the City of Monroe that the forms, terms, and conditions and the execution, delivery, and performance of the loan agreement and the note are hereby approved and authorized. Be it further resolved by the City of Monroe that the terms of the loan agreement and the note, including the interest rate provisions which shall be as provided in the note, are in the best interest of the borrower for the financing of the project, and the governing body of the borrower designates and authorizes the following persons to execute, deliver, and to attest respectively to the loan agreement, the note, and any related documents necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by the loan agreement. So resolve this eighth day of April two thousand and fourteen. That is the resolution, Mayor.
Okay. Need a motion for this resolution here.
Has the city attorney reviewed the note?
We have. We've reviewed the note and the loan agreement, and they are all in order. And the interest rate is ridiculously low.
I move to approach the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Little. Seconded by Ms. Malcolm. Any more discussion? Hearing nine. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Item number five is the Walton Behavioral Health Facility.
Mayor, I want to turn it over to Ms. Stacy York. She is a vice president with U.S. Health Fest.
Thank you for having me here today. My name is Stacy York, like you said, vice president with U.S. Health Fest. We're a psychiatric hospital corporation. Our corporate team has a couple of hundred years collectively, some twenty-plus years and others thirty-plus years' experience opening new, building new, buying existing and turning around psychiatric facilities and operating psychiatric facilities over the long term. The facility that we're proposing in Monroe will be a seventy-bed facility. We'll treat youth, we'll treat adults, and we'll treat senior adults. What we're most known for, our leadership team, is specializing in psychiatric care and substantive use care. So we develop programs that meet the needs of special populations. For example, a women's program that meets the needs of women where the groups are only women that also has a strong trauma component to it because that's very common amongst women who are hospitalized in acute care. We will also have, we're very known for our experience with the military. I myself am a veteran, and so that's a program that I myself developed with our prior company. So we will have a unit that treats combat-related post-traumatic stress disorder, addiction, and dual diagnosis of those. So those are just a couple of examples of the type of specialty programs that we might have here, we would plan to have here in town. We're very much a needs-based organization, so we would speak with the professionals in the community, look at the patients that are coming in, and if there's a need that we don't have a program for, but there is a need for, then we would go ahead and put some time and effort into developing that. I know that you all received our summary, and so you already have some basic information about the program. The state obviously has a certificate of need process. Our application has been turned in. It has been deemed complete, so all the teas are crossed. And now we're in what's called the community, or I call the community support phase of the project, where we have through May to obtain letters of support from the community. That's why I'm in town. That's my role in the community is public relations. And so we're asking for the city council to provide a letter of support for our project. And so I would love to have the opportunity to answer any questions that y'all might have.
First of all, I'm glad to see you here. I think that there's a need for this type of facility, but can you tell me what your company's philosophy is on energy care?
We will treat anyone regardless of ability to pay that needs inpatient emergency acute admission. And some of those will come transfers from hospitals. We'll just take everybody being transferred from a hospital. We operate a twenty-four seven assessment and admission process, so we even take walk-ins. So somebody walks in in the middle of the night, they're suicidal, homicidal, danger to themselves or others, psychotic in any way, and need acute care, we'll admit them regardless of ability to pay. And then we have a charity care policy, just like any hospital would, where financially you need to meet the criteria for that, and then you would be able to be a charity patient. And the state will require a certain percentage of our care to be charity, so we've always done that and we've always been very successful just basically helping everybody. There's a lot of payers. Private insurance, Medicare, Medicaid, Department of Behavioral Health contracts, TRICARE. So the, when the day is said and done and you've gotten on all of those different policies, the charity care is very manageable in our business.
I think you just answered it, but you do accept all payers, including Medicare and Medicaid?
Yes, sir.
Another question, staffing. If you build a seventy-bed facility, which is a good-sized facility, what do you expect in the way of professional staffing?
Well, we're gonna need close to somewhere between eighty and a hundred employees. Some will be full-time in terms of nursing staff, psychiatric techs. You know, we need the same things other hospitals need, just in smaller numbers, dietary, housekeeping, and maintenance. We'll have a team of senior management, so there will be some jobs for professionals who have master's degrees or bachelor's degrees in nursing. And then also our whole assessment department will be staffed by licensed clinicians. We'll have a CEO. And then we will have part-time staff as well. And then we will have what we call PRN staff as needed. And that helps us because psychiatric care census fluctuates a lot. The kids' census really goes down in the summer and really goes down in the holidays. They just do better when there's nothing required of them. They decompensate when they get a lot of stress with school and all, so it'll really go up. And so when we have those fluctuations, we'll use the PRN staff for those high points, and that kind of keeps you from having to hire layoff, hire, you know, which you would have to do. So PRN staff is necessary as well, and there's a lot of nursing staff and techs that like doing that, and they usually work for more than one facility doing call and work. So that's, does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, I'm curious if you know or project how many of those people might move into the area from outside to assume some of the key roles.
There will be some of that, and that's been our experience in other areas. But we will first try to recruit locally, and if you've got the talent here locally, then we would hire locally. That's obviously the least expensive way to do it and is a good partnership in the community. If there's a position that we can't find, because y'all don't have a psych hospital here, even in the whole nine county area we're proposing to serve, so there could be some positions where there's just not anybody. You might not have a master's-degreed psych nurse for, say, director of nursing that has twenty years' experience in inpatient psych. You know, there just might not be that person. Then we will recruit nationally and bring somebody in, so we'll be moving a few people here to fill those roles if we can't find them locally.
Are you anyway connected to the mental health clinic here?
No, we're not. We're a private organization. Are you talking about Advantage? They've already done a letter of support, and we have talked into like the Department of Behavioral Health, the Sheriff's Department, those folks that are most connected to psychiatric care, and they're telling us that, yes, absolutely, there's a critical need for our services in the area.
And in the past with the other buildings or whatever, how many do you have surrounding?
We're a new, we're a new company, and I do want the city council, I'm glad you brought that up, the city council to understand it. When you look at our information, our history as a leadership team is under the name Ascend Health. And Dr. Richard Kresh is our president and CEO. He is himself a psychiatrist, but he's been running psychiatric hospitals for a good amount of his career. And so he owned, was the majority owner of Ascend Health, which was sold in two thousand and two to Universal Health Services, a larger corporation. Then he started U.S. Health Fest. He brought his core team back, which included me. We all wanted to come back to start a new company. So we have, we're approved for a CON in Washington State, and we're in the design phase of opening that seventy-five-bed facility in Snohomish County, north of Seattle. We have a CON that's pending in Coweta County, Georgia, to build a facility in Noonan, sixty-bed facility. And then we have an acquisition team that's separate than me, not on that team, but they're looking and in the process of purchasing facilities that are already open. I don't know if any of those are in Georgia because I don't know what all is on that list. So I could get a call tomorrow and we could have operations, but we do not have an open and operating hospital at this time. So we're an old, we're a new company with an old team, so I just want to make sure that was clear. Thanks for asking.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking. Anything else?
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a motion for a letter of support. Yes, okay. We need a motion for a letter of support.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Bradley.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Scott. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Item number six, discussion for news zoning code draft.
Mayor, council, this is just informational, just primarily to update you guys and for the community. As you know, we've been talking about this for some time, and we've already had one town hall meeting last week. We had a town hall meeting where we had a few attendees, and we have two more town hall meetings open to the public, which are just informational meetings and opportunity
hall meetings open to the public, which are just informational meetings, an opportunity to sit down and have discussions, answer questions about the draft code. As you know, the draft version of the code is available online. There's also copies available in the code office, if anyone would like a hard copy of it. And just to give you a quick rundown of the upcoming dates related to the code, new zoning code adoption, we'll have another town hall meeting immediately prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission next Tuesday, a week from tonight on April the 15th, starting at 5:30, and thereafter have a more formal presentation and discussion of the code draft with the Planning and Zoning Commission at their regularly scheduled meeting of April 15th at 6:00 P.M. Additionally, we'll have one additional town hall meeting on April the 24th, again at 6:00 P.M. here in city council chambers. All of these meetings are in city council chambers. And then at the first called meeting of May, before you're, before you guys, on May the 6th, at the called meeting in May, we will have a formal presentation that I'll conduct, just kind of going over the ins and outs of the code in a little more detail. Then we will have first reading of the new zoning ordinance on May the 13th, and then we'll have second reading on June the 10th. The reading will be prepared such that adoption will be effective on July 1. One of the questions that came up at the last town hall meeting, so I want to make sure and be very clear about this, because this primary question's come in, is this is an update to our zoning ordinance. We are not changing the zoning map in any way. So we are correlating all existing zoning classifications with new congruous, new zoning classifications. Put it simply, whatever you have in existence now will not have to be changed, will not have to be brought into any sort of new change unless and until there's a change of use, change of build-out, basically. But we're not changing the zoning map, we're only changing the zoning ordinance as it relates to those particular zoning classifications under our zoning map. So that's just the brief update that I wanted to bring to you, and of course invite all of you and the public to come out to any of the town hall meetings to discuss the zoning ordinance draft and take any input, because we did receive some input. I think at the last meeting, we'll be making a few small, minor changes based upon that, and there, we will continue to receive input up until we get to first reading the second week of May. So if you have any questions, we have it to answer those, otherwise that's the only update.
Is that what you said?
Five thirty next Tuesday, and then we'll have a formal presentation at the Planning and Zoning meeting that, there, shortly thereafter at six o'clock or once we're concluded, and then again on April the 24th at 6:00 P.M. here in council chambers.
You know, it may not make any difference on the 1st or the 24th, based on turnout for the previous, on the last one, but the 24th is also a time when the county commissioners are having their debate forum, whatever, going on at the historic courthouse, so I don't know if it would be a conflict, but it's something to keep in mind.
For the election.
For the county commission election, yeah.
We checked our calendar to make sure it didn't conflict with anything, but I can say that we did not check the county.
I think it's the chamber.
Ah, it's a chamber event, okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Item number seven is the discussion of the staff update on the community workshop and the utility concerns. Turn it over to Matthew.
Turn it over to Ms. Prager as well, she can go down with the list we compiled.
Thank you. We, the staff in me, just to put our heads together, make sure that we were doing everything that we could do on our end to get the bills out and time to mail and that kind of thing. Just some of the notes that came out of that meeting, I did want to point out some of the things that we've put into place since some of the questions and concerns come about. We've implemented partial payment options for all customers, they can come in and pay, you know, partial payments up to their due date. We've implemented monthly extensions, and we've also hired our community customer service liaison, Ms. Broughton, who's done an excellent job, spent a lot of time looking into the community's concerns and have met with them, and I think is going to be a really good addition for us. A couple of things that came out of our meeting with the billing staff, they are going to start processing our billing cycles before the cutoff dates. Doesn't mean a lot to most of you, and didn't mean a lot to me. It will cause a change with our customer service people, they will have to calculate. If somebody's late, it will go ahead and put their current bill in with their past due, and so if somebody comes in and says, I only want to pay what's past due, they'll have to manually recalculate. Where before, by holding back and not processing that until the due date and the past due date had passed, it was more of an automatic thing. But we felt like it was enough that it would give us a few extra days on the bail-in time. It has been brought to our attention that Surebill, who is our billing processor, as soon as we get them the bills, they process it, they take it to their business facility and get that mail out. So it's not a delay on that end. We've got to call into the postal service, the business unit, to see if there's anything that we can do to maybe speed up the mail process, but, you know, with that, our hands are kind of tied. But we're, we will be processing those books, may gain a few extra days in some cases, some cases it will not. We have some cycles that may take a full week to actually read those meters. So you could look at your bill and say, well, my meter was read on the 10th, but we might have to wait until the 15th to actually process that, because we can't just process bits and pieces. It has to be all at one time. So just because your read date is one date doesn't mean that we could have mailed those bills out that soon. So just want to make sure, you know, folks understand that there is lag time for a reason. So we're working on that, and hopefully, you know, we'll see a bit of change, maybe speeding up a few days there. A couple of things that are in progress, Matthew and Mr. Chancey has met with Cindy Littlefish, looking to implement a program for some of our fixed income customers. We could probably go into a few more details on that if we need to, but still got to iron out some of those fine points with that. But it would strictly be for fixed income that would maybe go through a program that she would help us to actually implement. We're sending staff later this month to training, to do some education and energy audits, so that we'll have somebody here that will know how to do that, and then Ms. Broughton's actually going with him as well, so she'll have knowledge as to, you know, how those audits are done. We're, some of the ongoing things, it's just going to take some time to iron out. We're working on rearranging some of our cycles in our books, some of those that do take four, five days to actually read. We're looking to split those cycles up. That was done several years back, it hasn't been updated. That is quite an arduous task. We're hoping to sort of do that as we're doing the new water meters, so that once those things get on board, we'll be able to see, you know, which way we can split that. If we do that and break those into smaller books, hopefully we can get those bills out a little bit quicker. We're working with Surebill, who is our billing provider, to see about doing an e-billing. If we're able to do that, it would enable whoever to sign up for that process, to log in and actually see their bill rather than wait for it to come through the mail. So that is a positive thing. That will cost some money, but it's something that we feel like, you know, might be worth implementing. We're asking ECG about a survey on senior citizens, maybe a disabled rate. They don't want to while back. There are not a lot of seniors on here that offer that, but that is an option. Maybe we can come up with something that we could offer truly fixed-income people, some sort of a different rate, if that's a legal thing to do. I'm not really sure that we can offer a different rates to that extent, but that's something that we're all looking into. And then the possibility of a budget billing, but those are things that will fall through down the road. Any questions?
I think she covered, I can expound on the Fish thing if I need to. I really, just really, just starting to talk to Cindy and get in some sort of process. I know they have their process now where when customers or people come to them that are truly in need, that they go through a program such as budgeting their fixed income, and they really take a look at everything. Where we would come into play would be the recommendation off of Fish, saying, hey, this individual is truly in need, and that way we could work with them on the late fee, you know, potentially waiving the late fee, do this on a quarterly basis or even a semi-annual basis, to where they have a standing extension. So just some ideas like that, that would help the elderly and disabled who are, again, a true fixed income.
Okay. Well, certainly appreciate the work y'all put into it, and I know this is not the end of it, we're just, it's not an easy fix. So thank y'all very much. Okay, with no other business, we need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor? Lady adjourned.